Not on the com.
I'm fine.
The T that made the team, but they website they asked. But you know, com.
Coming out. I ain't learning.
Yeah, I have it on stick and I forgot the stick.
So we actually meant to take you back to the phone. It's gonna take the spring.
I ain't getting it too, but he's got four different videos. He's got very good. The two great deals come in and out. He had.
Take three to point like one lap and does any of them.
Do what? I hope here.
It's ain't that good.
CGI. Hey, Rob, we're trying to figure.
I got it three days a week. Me and him hit you up.
JT, where's JT? Have we got to catch up? We're gonna go ahead and start the meeting today. Bank off the panel. JT's not here. Oh, if they can hear me. We're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. Can you hear me now?
We hear you.
I seem to always. Yeah, I talk a little too soft, so we're gonna start out with Godwin and Associates. They're gonna speak about our audit. And Mr. Godwin, do you mind just coming over here and sit down?
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to meet with you this evening and discuss your audit. This is as of June 30, 2022. And I present usually two or three different ways. Depends on the board. When we look at an audit, we're looking at two different aspects. Number one is the accounting. The accounting reflects the numbers, which is your balance sheet, your income statement, and statement of cash flows. A lot of boards say, hey, I see these numbers all year long. You know, we don't particularly wanna go through the numbers. We're gonna go through the second component of what you do, and that's the audit itself. And so generally, what I do is start out with the audit. And then if there are particular numbers that you want to look at and discuss, I'll be glad to do that. Our audit report is on page two. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry.
They're all here. And I mean, they got brought in, you just have one.
Oh, yes, I didn't know where they were.
Well, I kinda talk about the audit opinion itself, and then she'll get you those reports have the numbers in it. But just a little backdrop. We are, we're hired both by the city and by the state on an audit contract. And it requires for us to conduct this audit in accordance with government audit standards. And so those standards require a little bit different level of auditing than just the normal standards do. And in particular, this year, a little bit different than what you normally have. We conduct what's called a federal single audit. And for recipients of federal funds, $750,000 or more, we have to do specific kind of compliance work, audit on these different compliance standards that goes along with the grant. Page two is where I was wanting to start. This audit opinion, the report itself has expanded from about a one-page report to now it's three pages. So if we work our way through some of this report, it'd give you a better idea of what we do, what our mission is. And so be glad to address anything related to that. Basically, our mission is to render an opinion on whether these financial statements are fairly stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles that are specific to governmental entities. So what the, your accounting department does is record transactions in what's called a general ledger. And we'll come in and get the general ledger, and that's the foundation that we operate off to conduct our audit. So there's two components to it in large part. There's your balance sheet items, and it's like you take a snapshot of what assets and liabilities exist right at June the 30th, at the end of the year. So there's specific kind of audit work we do related, relation to balance sheet items. And then the income statement is kind of a transactional approach. You have your revenue streams coming in. You got your disbursement streams going out. So we do a lot of samples of transactions related to revenues and also to expenditures. But get back page to page two. It talks about who's responsible for these financial statements. Management's responsible. And so we help management put these financial statements together. But it's on these financial statements we render an opinion. And so that's the fourth paragraph. Fourth paragraph, it talks about management being responsible. Now, another subset of that paragraph is what's called a going concern. This is new additions for cities. If during the course of our audit, we detect such a material financial weakness, then we have to go in and analyze whether this entity has reasonable cause that we feel like that they can endure for 12 more months. Now, there have been entities that we've, that we've put in here that we don't think that there is substantial doubt that they won't exist for 12 months. Of course, that's kind of like a kiss of death. But that's something now we have to address in our reports for all cities. This is, again, this is a brand-new aspect of this report. And then the last paragraph on page two has to do with our responsibilities in regards to these financial statements. Of course, realizing, as it says in this paragraph, audit's not absolute assurance, and it's not a guarantee that these financials are in accordance with government audit standards, but our audit is conducted to have a high level of assurance. Of course, it talks in here, there's always a risk of not detecting a material misstatement related to fraud or to error. It's, it's, error is usually what occurs, and we make audit adjustments to correct errors. Fraud, as it talks about later on in this paragraph, is the hardest to detect. And we don't, we're not here to conduct a fraud audit. Now, during the course of our samples that we pulled and testing transactions and the other audit work that we do, if we detect fraud, according to our contract, our audit contract, we're to notify the state Tennessee. We've had this before, not in Selmer, but when this occurs, usually the state have us to look at two or three other things, and then they'll come in, they'll have us to stand down, and then they'll, they'll conduct the fraud audit themselves. And then we'll come back in and finish the financial statement audit. But we didn't detect anything that we had to notify the state about. So the overall opinion that we're rendering on these financial statements is what's called an unqualified opinion. And that is, we feel like these financial statements, based on our audit, are fairly stated in all material aspects in accordance with the government accounting standards that's put out by the Government Accounting Standards Board. So I kinda go through this report now by sections. And so if y'all wanna stop me, say, hey, let's look at this particular number, or tell me about this part of it, I'll be glad to. The next section of this report is what's called management's discussion and analysis. That's on pages five through nine. It's an overview of all these financial statements. And in it, management is presenting kind of a synopsis of the overall balance sheet and income statement. Pages 10 and 11, it's what's called a government-wide statement of position and statement of activities. This is outside the normal accounting of a city. It's where that we pull all of these different funds in and put it on a different basis of accounting. It's called a full accrual basis of accounting. This is a standard that was required basically by bonding agencies where they wanna be able to compare cities all on the same basis of accounting. So it's not what's, it's not in the set of books it's given to us. So basically, it's pulling in fixed assets for all the government funds and depreciating it, spread that depreciation out over the different departments, and showing how these departments would fare had, were they required to depreciate their assets. We'll look at pages, page 12 starts the government funds. Now, this is on a modified accrual basis of accounting, and that's what's conducted here in the city. The balance sheet is on page 12 that shows the assets and the liabilities of the government funds. So that you can look at this and see the cash and the CDs that were in the bank at June the 30th, also the fund balances that are available to be expended over the coming year. Page 14 is an overview, our condensed version of the government funds. We used to call it the income statement. Basically, it's what it revenues and expenditures for the general fund, sanitation, and then it's grouped together for the non-major funds, and those are listed separately out in the back part of the report. I'll go over to page 23. This is the balance sheet for the proprietary funds. That's water, sewer, and also nat- natural gas. It's a reflection of the assets and liabilities of those funds. You took a snapshot of the assets and liabilities at June the 30th. Page 24, what we would have used to call the income statement, showed a positive increase, water and sewer fund of $716,000. Go up a few lines from that, the actual operating would be $364,000. The $716,000 reflects grants, the grants that have come in. Natural gas had an income of $139,000. Pages, the next section, pages 26 through 45, notes to the financial statements. These notes are specific disclosure requirements of the Government Accounting Standards Board. It in it, it lists fixed assets, changes in fixed assets, debt, changes in debt. Lot of information in it about pensions and where the pension fund, how it fared through the year. And of course, that is, actual reports are conducted by the state of Tennessee on those pension plans, but they have to be accounted for here in the city, and they're reported here in these financial statements as well. Page 49 starts the financial statements for the non-major government funds. That's the State Street Aid Fund and the Drug Fund. And that goes through page 52. Page 53 is a schedule of the changes in property tax receivable by year. Goes back for over 10 years. Supposed to have a 10-year listing. I think we have more than 10 years listed here. But a lot of information here about your property tax that the city assesses and brings in. Next section is amortization schedules on debt. I'd like to go back to page 58. This is a schedule that is required. In particular, if there is a single audit, federal awards $750,000 or more, you'll see for the year that we're talking about, Selmer had a million $72,453 in federal awards. So we have to select some of these programs, major programs, and conduct compliance tests on those to make sure controls are proper and that the compliance was proper in terms of how the money was used. And we have to report on it, and then we have to turn around and submit this audit to the Federal Clearing House by March 31st of this year, and so they can take a look at this as well. Page 59 and 60 is the internal control and compliance report. That's required by government accounting stand, auditing standards. And 61 and 62 is the compliance program for the single audits. And findings, because it's a single audit, the findings are shown a different place. That's on the schedule of findings and question costs on page 64. Some of these findings go with a lot of city governments because of a lack of accounting staff. First one, inadequate segregation of duties is, is fairly common. Lots of towns just have one person taking care of everything. Some towns, there's two or three people, but if one's on vacation and the other's at lunch, then you wind up with one person handling the cash and keeping books at the same time. So you got basically the same issue. Second finding on page 65, purchase orders not being issued properly. This too is a, is a finding that is kind of prevalent in a lot of towns over control over purchases. So that employees are not out going through town and making unauthorized purchases is the basic underlying reason that you have a purchase order policy. The next finding, financial statements materially misstated. Again, this is one that's kinda, it's, it's common because of the complexity of government statements. And we go in and we make adjustments with management's approval. The only reason we make the audit adjustments is to get these financial statements up to the level we can render an unqualified opinion. If these adjustments were not made, we'd have to, we'd have to have a limited opinion on those. So we've given those adjustments, and they've been made here at the city. There's compliance on bottom of page 65 where State Street Aid Fund expenditures exceeded the budget appropriations. And then on page 66, on bid procedures, and audit staff has went over these with management here. And the responses to these findings is on page 67 and 68. Management's corrective action plan. That's an overview of the financial report as far as the audit side's concerned, without really looking or going, talking about any of the numbers. Again, I'll be glad to, if there's a particular page you'd like to go back to and look at. And I haven't memorized all the transactions that went through City Hall, you know, for the last year. But I'll be glad to talk about different aspects, and if I don't know the answer, I'll, I'll find an answer for you. And I will also add, you just now got your reports. If you look through them later on, if you say, oh, why, you know, I'd like to ask about this, I'll be glad to come back and meet with you, or you're welcome to call me at my office. You know, I'll be glad to discuss it with you there. But, because I know you, you just now looked at getting the numbers, and something might pop up that you wanna ask about later on. And so again, I'll be glad to come back if you should have a question and address any question you may have. Okay, all right, thank you.
No, and if, if anybody has any specific line out of number of questions that y'all have, y'all can shoot in email, and I can pull up the detail as far as that goes.
Thank you.
Next up is Chief Carr on the fire department. He's gonna talk about his grant.
The F G grants opened today. I just got our term down letter on the truck and the Safer grant last week. And I made a phone call to DC, and it, as usual, they run out of money before they got to us. So I'm just gonna resubmit those as, like I did last year. The truck, it'd be probably a $5,000 or $6,000 match with sale of old trucks. The Safer, there's no match. The Rescue Squad grant, there's no match. And then I think the other one is fire prevention. It's around $900 some, or let's say 900 or 90.
900?
Yeah, yeah, that's right. It's around 900, but I can take care of that out of my regular budget.
Next up is Ray Allen. He wanna talk about.
Yeah, I just had one, one issue going on that I needed to discuss. I have a little issue with, part of the issue is resolved already, part of it is not. I have an issue with contractors that keep coming up to the, to the yard. I don't have anybody monitoring the cans yet, but we are looking for somebody. Whether it's homeowners, whether it's contractors, I personally don't feel it's the city's responsibility to pay to dump what a contractor is, is basing a bid job on. Meaning, he does a roofing job, I spoke about this before. He does a roofing job, brings all the shingles up to my department, dumps them in our cans, and gets paid for hauling the material away. He's not paying for it. There are, there are property owners that will, somebody will skip out on the lease, or somebody will move out and leave all their junk behind, you know, bring it all up to the city, fill four, five, six, seven, eight yard dumpsters. I'm just feeling it's not necessarily the city's responsibility. I mean, they're in the business of property ownership, just like somebody is in the business of being a contractor. In my opinion, you know, when I owned a property up in Connecticut, I disposed of all of my waste. I didn't put it up to the curb or, or bring it up to the city. Well, they didn't, really didn't do that where I was from. But I'm just trying to, I, I talked to the mayor about it. I called a couple of, a couple of aldermen. I spoke to them. The consensus feeling, I'm sorry I didn't call all four, but the consensus behind it is, you know, it's, it's really not the city's responsibility, no. It's been going on for years, but it just seems to be something that's getting to be more and more out of control. I had an issue with a contractor that was working on a house in Selmer. He brought the material up, up to the yard. Somebody, one of my guys obviously told him, that can't go in the dumpster. It's gotta go into the incinerator to be burned. They lit the fire. We just happened to look back at 3:30, and we had, you know, a 60-foot flame shooting out of the top of the incinerator. It's not safe, you know. They knew they were coming back the next morning with more stuff, and that we wouldn't have burned it in time for them to get rid of the stuff. Let it, went on their way, told nobody about it, and we just happened to notice it. So I, you know, sat there till 5:30, 6 o'clock at night, just making sure I wouldn't catch anything around. I just wanted to get a consensus from the board. You know, I don't mind people bringing, you know, if they miss their garbage day and they bring it up there. That's what those cans are for, in my opinion. You know, I just wanted to get a consensus from the board on, on, you know, what we should do about this, this unknown problem. They're dumping, like I had mentioned before, somebody threw a battery in there. A battery went in the truck. Brandon was walking away from the gar- now, this is a brand-new leased truck. Brandon is walking away from the garbage truck. Smoke is coming out of the back of it. Dumped 10 tons of garbage up on the hill, eight tons of garbage up on the hill, and got the battery out, separated it from the material so it wouldn't, wouldn't be a problem. I talked to the mayor about it. We're gonna try to get somebody, you know, who's maybe retired, that wants to, you know, a little job, and, and, you know, he can bounce between the shop and the, the cans up on the hill. And, you know, we're, we're planning on doing that. But is it the consensus of the board to let continue? You know, people just, you know, it's, it's costing the city money, in other words. You know, if you guys wanna allow it, you know, that's, I, I don't think it's, it's our responsibility. I think it's, it's theirs. You know, if somebody wants to get, if Jim writes them a note, you're not supposed to put bulk out early, and somebody wants to bring a couch up or a chair up or something like that, that's one thing. But an apartment clean out, you know, you know, 40 bags of asphalt shingles, you know, that's, or, or lighting a fire and leaving. I mean, you know, I don't, I don't think it's, it's really the city's responsibility for somebody who's in the business of making money.
Fairly, I agree with you.
I agree with you too. Then what I'll do is all.
What's that?
They need to take that money, they make it on the customer and pay for the guy being up there, or girl being up there.
Yeah, well, I mean, there was a couple of different ideas. You know, we could charge people for doing it. A pickup truck will load this price, a trailer will load this price. But, you know, we don't have any, we don't have anything to weigh, you know. You know, that just gets into a whole different area. We have a transfer station not, you know, five, four miles out of the, the city limits. I mean, it can certainly be taken there for a minimum cost.
Probably easier to take it there for most people, anyway.
I wouldn't doubt it. I wouldn't doubt it.
I've taken loads and loads of stuff up there.
Yeah, there's, there you can.
These are getting out of it.
Yeah, yeah.
Especially if you got a trailer or whatever.
There's no question about it.
Having that person in place to just monitor it will help a lot, and then harder to get out, maybe.
All right, so maybe I'll write something up and put it in McNary County News and just, you know, these are the new policies we're, we're setting in place.
Regular trash, okay?
Yeah, I mean, that's what they're there for. Okay, thank you.
All right, Jim Riprowell would speak, and this was in y'all's packet last time on the orphans. I just like another copy today to believe.
The state, of course, updates their building code. And we're required to be within seven years of what they adopt. We probably should go ahead and adopt the 18 codes. That's what they're, what they've updated to. And now, the benefit of that too is it will help the ISO rating for some of them by adopting those codes. But, you know, it's inevitable down the road to happen. I suggest going ahead and just getting, getting it took care of now. and just getting, getting it took care of now, um, and, uh, that way we don't have to, you know, kick a can down the road. But, you know, whatever y'all would prefer.
Is there any drawback to...
Yeah, no, that's...
Is this codes for our building, or is it codes for the...
Construction.
Okay. So you primarily will take care of...
Yeah, none of y'all, they'll just apply what new construction.
Okay, yep.
And then we'll put that on agenda in February to have the first reading, is that...
Yes, if they do reading this.
Y'all have any questions to that? I was just going to ask, the work sessions, do y'all still want to continue work sessions?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
John, Johnny's good enough? Our Johnny said yes. Making sure they're productive. Sometimes we speak, sometimes we don't, so I just want to make sure that we're not wasting our time. Okay. Any other questions? Yeah? The lady?
Hey, I'll leave that one there. Two things, actually. I've got, I was hoping I would have it today, but it didn't come in. We've got Richie Vodford is giving us a proposal on an EAP program for our employees. It'll be separate, apart from our insurance, um, and not attached, which means that as far as HIPAA goes, I won't be involved, so I won't know anything. But it will be equivalent to what the state has for state employees, where you've got a one-eight-hundred number for EAP, and there's, there's all kinds of information that can, you know, they can go to this, this website, and there's different topics you can click on and all this kind of stuff, and if they want to make a phone call and, and want to get help for various reasons, um, but we are getting a quote on that. And he expected it to be here, well, we thought it would be here today, but it should be here by the end of the week, so whenever we get it, I'll share it with everybody. But at the very least, we'll have it for next week. And then also, um, we are getting information about, um, I forget what it's called, that is the, the mass call thing, um, like, um, like Adamsville has or whatever, where people can sign up. We're trying to get information about, you know, the Nix, Nix...
We're already signed up for Nixle.
Selmer is?
Yeah.
Well, Selmer Utility is not involved in that at all.
I don't know who's involved in that, but I called them like four years ago, we were already signed up, I think.
Well, that's good to know, because we didn't know.
Somebody used to do something.
Yeah, we don't, we don't, I don't know who is involved or who's in charge of that, but Selmer Utility is not involved in it at all, has no contact with it at all, so...
Cause I, I've called the company, it's been several years ago now. They already have a contract, I gave the information, and I've lost it by now, but...
Well, I don't know, but that would be good information.
Probably call them and find out.
Well, I call, somebody needs to, I don't, I don't know, I, I made a phone call to...
Do you have to pay something for that?
Well, I mean, I'm assuming, I don't know.
They am, probably not.
Yeah, I don't know. I just, if, if we are involved, if the town of Selmer is involved with that program, then Selmer Utility needs to be involved with that program as well, uh, so that we can put out information as well.
It may not be anymore, but I know at one time, and I can't remember what they told me, I passed it along with somebody else, and then...
Yeah, okay. So we just need to find out, yeah. If we have a Nixle account, then, or whatever it's called.
I can't even spell that name, so...
Roger set that up, it was about four years ago.
There you go.
Yeah. Yeah, Roger Rickman set that up about four years ago.
Mass takes... And the, and the good thing, the main, the main reason that, that we would want to use something like that is because at Selmer Utility, we fight people giving us correct phone numbers. Either they change phone numbers, or they initiate, intentionally don't give it anyway. And so, with that program, it helps that they have to sign up for it. And, you know, we'll put the information there, but it's, the money's on their back as to whether or not their phone number's right. So, um, that's why we wanted to, to look into something. And if we've got it, by all means, let's use it.
Don't, don't hold me to this. I think you get so many things for free, maybe if you start using it all the time, you have to pay something, but I can't remember exactly.
May I address? I have access to...
Nixle, N-I-X-L-E.
May I address? I have access to Nixle, and I do post things on it. You're right, it is a paid service, and when you pay them and actually create a, a contract with them, you reach a lot more people. So ultimately, the way it works on the free side is, is your citizens have to go sign up, and then once they sign up, they can allow their text message to get, they receive text messages, or they allow themselves to get emails on Nixle. I haven't looked into the pricing on it yet, it's something that's become the back burner, but we do use it, and in fact, I used it most recently on road conditions. So if you're not signed up for it, you're not getting notifications. But I think if you use their subscribed or paid services, they, they actually, obviously, like everyone else, purchase phone numbers from, you know, every, data centers, and then it, people actually start getting text messages, you know, in, in within the radius of, of what you set it for. And what I typically do is set it for like five miles from the city, uh, from the center of the city, so...
Well, it, that's something that we need, I need, I mean, we need to know how to work on it, because it's something, you know, like today, we had a ma, a big outage out in Mickey Pebble Hill area, you know, things like that, you know, it would be nice to be able to...
Yeah, if you ever had a hole water.
Yes, and that was, that was the issue that we had, because, you know, we didn't, most of our customers don't give us accurate phone numbers, and we, we did all we could do with what we knew we had. So it would be, that's what we wanted to look at, is so...
I, I don't know if I'm an admin on the Nixle system, I will look, and I can, if I am, I can probably grant you access.
Or I can just say, hey, put this on there for me.
I sleep during the day. But I, 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 I think it's worth, being the system that it is, TBI uses a very similar system, it knew I was in the middle, and I got woke up by a missing child text coming through. But I think it is worth looking down the avenue, possibly looking at purchasing a plan for Nixle, that way we can reach more people with it. Because like I said, as it is now, Nixle only will send messages to people that subscribe. When we first put that system in place, I posted on Facebook, hey, go to this link, you know, sign up for this, so you can get notifications, but then, you know, we, we don't use it a lot. It's really more based for like serious emergencies, but you can put out what you're talking about, too.
Well, I mean, you know, that, and, and that's the thing, and I think it, it is a timely, you know, I think if, if we put that same, you know, set it up, got it set up, whatever, I think it is a, if it got posted on Facebook right now, we would have a whole lot of utility customers that signed up for it, so...
Yeah, I agree.
Another thing, I don't know with, with that particular service, but the ease of signing up for it. Like I know with Jackson Police Department and Mass County Sheriff's, it's real simple, like, it's text star six-three-two to JPD, and it signs you up.
Right.
Instead of clicking the link and going in and putting in whatever information.
You just respond on your phone.
Yeah.
To be fair, it's been years since we have looked at Nixle, we've just been kind of loosely using it for a few years. He's right, Roger Rickman did set it up when he was here. We haven't re, really revisited it very much, and it may be something worth revisiting to see if maybe they have an updated way to sign up for it, because I really don't know.
I think if it was pretty simple, you know, like, just text a short thing to whatever number, then we put it out on Facebook, run a ad in the paper, it'd be...
Text a zip code to...
Yeah.
Eight-eight-eight.
Right.
Seven-seven-seven-seven.
Yeah, whatever, yeah.
Cause I get households, I don't get Selmers.
Well, that's what I tell, I called Kerry, I said, y'all are making us look bad, what is the company?
I hope they don't have as many problems as I do, that's all I got to say.
But like she said, with the water stuff, I mean, if it's in Mickey Pebble Hill, we'll have to go further than the five miles.
But is it one of those things where they can be...
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I want it to be where they choose to sign up.
When you go to a professional account, I think you can actually increase the radius. At our free one, I'm, we're only at a five mile radius, so, there's a lot of limitations on free, right?
Yeah, we're, we're way, that's five miles.
So, uh, I guess with the chief's blessing, I will, uh, look into it a little deeper and try to get you some plan, um, cost, and then get back to you and, and see where we're at with that, so, not sure how expensive it is.
And today is law enforcement, appreciation day, so thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you guys.
I think they got some food brought to them today and some cookies? All right, and something else, maybe in the journal?
I got something real quick. I was going to play for work by the end of the morning.
I was supposed to have to work, but I didn't, yeah.
They're still going to be here, we ain't ready.
Yes. Uh, now, I'll call him tomorrow.
Go back to work.